We are.
We are.
Perfect. Good evening, everybody. We'll go ahead and call to order the Sacramento County Planning Commission for December 18th. If you'll please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioners Borja.
Here.
Raythal.
Here.
Corona Savagnano.
Here.
Devlin.
Here.
And Titishi. We do have our quorum with those members present.
Thank you. If you'll all please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'll just take a brief moment and welcome Commissioner Devlin, who's our new member of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Thank you. Pleasure to be here.
And with that, we'll move to the non-contested portion of our agenda. If you'll please call item number one.
Sir, if I could read the announcement in first. Okay. So, the county fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. To make a public comment, please complete a speaker request form and hand it to the clerk. The chairperson will call your name when it's your turn to make a comment. To make a teleconference public comment, I'm sorry, I strike that. To make a telephone public comment, please dial 916-875-2500, and a clerk will pull you on board and bring you into the meeting at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Will you please call item number one?
So, for item number one this evening, we have a use permit and design review located at 5700 Cota Lane remodel, and I'm sorry, located at 5700 Cota Lane at the southeast corner of the intersection of Cota Lane and Claremont Road within erosion zone four of the Parkway Corridor combining zone in the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms community. And the environmental document is that it's exempt.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jessica Brandt, planning an environmental review. We do have this as a non-contested item. I have the project manager, David O'Roy Euros, who can provide a presentation if you would like, and the applicants are also present. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, would you like to see a staff presentation on this item or have any questions for staff this evening? All right. Thank you, staff. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant up if you'd like to address the commission. You're welcome to. Not required to, but you're welcome to if you'd like. All right. Any public comment on this item this evening?
And there are no public comments.
All right. With that, we'll go ahead and close public comment. And Commissioners, any other questions or deliberation on this item, or I'm happy to entertain a motion.
Motion. To support staff recommendation.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second for staff recommendation. Any discussion? All right. Will you please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioners Borja.
Yes.
Raythal.
Yes.
Corona Savagnano.
Yes.
Devlin.
Yes.
And the motion carries with those members present.
Thank you. Will you please call item number two this evening?
And for item number two this evening, we have a tentative subdivision map, minor amendment to the Alberta specific plan and design review located at 8501 Palladium Road, west of Palladium Road, and approximately 3,000 feet north of Alberta Road in the Rio Linda, Alberta community. And the environmental document is a notice of exemption.
Okay. Good evening again, Jessica Brandt. And this one also non-contested. And so, we have the project manager, Leanne Mueller, here if you'd like a presentation. The applicants are also here if you have any questions for them. Thank you.
Right. Commissioners, any requests for a staff presentation this evening on this item? All right. Thank you, staff. At this time, welcome the applicants to address the commission if you'd like.
I'm available to answer questions.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any questions for the applicant this evening? All right. Public comments?
And there are no public comments for this item.
Okay.
Okay, sir, you didn't have an, there wasn't an item number. Feel free to come on down, please.
Thank you.
So, I'm opposed to the subdivision on Palladium Road. First of all, our community can't take the traffic that's going to be imposed by it. The county can't even maintain our roads other than a shovel full of asphalt here and there, much less 90 new homes with what, maybe 300 more cars on it. There's no water there. There's no water district there. And it's too much for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comments this evening?
No, there are none.
Okay. Thank you so much. At this time, I can invite the applicant to address any concerns raised in public comment if you'd like.
Sure, why not?
Do you want to go ahead and get sworn in, please?
And let me get you sworn in. Bear with me, please. So, you're about to address the commission. Please raise your right hand any appropriate responses I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give the commission is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay. If you could, please state your name for the record and make this statement. I have been sworn.
My name is Timothy Kim, and I have been so sworn.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Chair Raythal and fellow commissioners, I'm Tim Kim, and I represent the Alberta 59 and a half north property. And I have been working on this property for, I believe, 17 years. And we went through the specific plan process and have done a lot of work out here, as some of you know. This property is not going to be developed right away, and the issues or concerns that the resident brought up would all be handled by us and other developers. So, we can't develop this property without doing the road improvements, without bringing the water to the site, any traffic improvements that are conditioned on our property, we would be responsible for. So, drainage, I mean, literally, all infrastructure required would be our responsibility, including drainage improvements for those struggling with drainage issues in that area. So, I feel confident that we'll not only address those issues, but make the situation better in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Any questions for the applicant team this evening? All right. Thank you, Mr. Kim.
Thank you.
It's a public meeting. I'll refer you to staff after the public meeting, so we have a business this evening. Thank you. All right. Commissioners, any deliberation on the item this evening, or I'll entertain a motion?
Just a question, I guess, of staff. Could you just speak to the traffic issue and roadway capacity, I guess? I mean, I assume that has all been looked at.
Sure. All right. I've just been informed that our hybrid meeting is not going as planned, so we're going to go ahead and take a brief recess. All right. Thank you for your patience. Commissioner Devlin, you had a question? First off?
Yeah. If staff could just adjust the comments related to water.
So, I can give you two options. One, I can go up and go through the full presentation, or I can just answer the question. Either way is fine.
Just answer the question.
Okay. So, for the subdivision, this is part of the larger Alberta specific plan. So, as part of that, there are specific mitigation measures with regards to providing water supply and then also for traffic improvements. So, this is not like a one-off subdivision. So, and then generally what happens is with these, the first lot that's developed on Palladium Road will have to make the improvements along the entirety of Palladium Road. So, Palladium Road would be improved to the standards in the SPA. And then additionally, obviously, the subdivision itself will have to make the internal road improvements. And then associated with that, it does have its own drainage basin that is on the westerly side of it. And then as far as water service goes, they are required prior to recording the map to indicate and show that they do have water service and the ability to provide water to serve the subdivision lots.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff this evening? All right. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve the staff recommendation.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Have a second. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further deliberation? All right. Will you please call the roll?
Yes. Members Borja.
Yes.
Raythal.
Yes.
Corona Savagnano.
Yes.
And Devlin.
Yes.
And the motion carries with those members present.
And we are now going to move to the contested portion of the agenda. If you'll please call item number three.
And so, your item number three this evening is for tentative subdivision map, special development permit and design review. It is located at 5601 Gibbons Drive between Orville Way, Liggett Way, and Holloway Lane in the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms community.
Good evening, Commissioners. We'll bring the slideshow up here in just a moment.
Metro, can you please bring up the slideshow for item number three?
In the meantime, I'm Nate Dobernek, the case planner for this. I do wish to acknowledge that we have the property owner, Senator Vasagianaparty, and the agent, John Masha, by 6:00 here. And then we do have some community members present as well that may or may not have questions following the presentation today. So, we have, today's project is Gibbons Meadows Tentative Subdivision Map, PLNP 2022-00074. Go to the next slide, please. Oh, pardon me. All right. We're up in the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms area, specifically the northwest quadrant of the Carmichael Community Plan. This property is addressed as 5601 Gibbons Drive. For those of you who may have had the opportunity to visit, you may have had a hard time finding the house years ago. It was completely surrounded by trees. Aerial views caused us to even wonder if there was a house there. It was completely untouched. The original house was built around 1955. Actually, has a dirt road connecting it to Gibbons Drive, and it's apparently remained untouched since. The properties, this will be important a little bit later on, to the west on Henderson Drive is part of the Becker Heights subdivision, and then to the east over there, and what's awkwardly known as Western Heights, to the east subdivision. And up north at Carmichael Cove were all developed around 1955, 56, or 61. So, all of that area was developed almost 68 to 65 years ago and has remained like that ever since. So, this is a holdout property. And as such, you'll see that there is a stub street on Orville and Liggett Way, which has the typical wooden barricade and just abruptly terminates, indicating that it was always the intention to punch through and create new street connections at such time that there be a residential subdivision, and that day is today. Go to the next. The zoning for the area is all part of a broader swath of residential RD5. Right at that junction, though, where Orville turns into Apple Blossom and makes that little twist, that becomes duplexes with the RD10. So, it's at that junction zone. But the large majority of the east, west, and south are all part of the RD5 zoning, which this proposal is inconsistent with. Previously, obviously, there was a house built there, 1955. Our records didn't indicate anything with it. Our digital stuff doesn't go back as far as that. But we did have a pre-up for this exact same project, and then the applicant did pull tree removal permits in 2021. Code violations, there was a few. Nothing that carried forward today, just the normal little things that pop up here and there. All of those have since been resolved. The entitlement request is threefold, tentative subdivision map, long time in the coming, which would be the 4.19 net acre parcel into 20 new single-family residential lots at the RD5 zoning district. There is a special development permit, and to be very clear, it would apply only to proposed Lot 5. Currently, the applicant had the choice of either scraping the house and starting anew or leaving the home. And the idea was, well, it's a good home, let's just get it off septic, connect it to sewer, and basically modernize it. As a result, though, it would have a 15-foot setback in the front yard. Now, it would have a huge backyard of almost 63 feet, which is about triple what most of the other homes on that street would have. But as a result, unless you were to push that road over to make it compliant, you would really impact the total number of residential units that would be allowed, because then the eastern side would get much narrower. And then finally, we have the design review, as always, to determine compliance with the Sacramento County Design Guidelines. The environmental document was an initial study mitigative negative declaration that did just wrap up recently. As part of your staff report packet, you should also have a response to comments. We did receive a couple of comments on those, some from citizens and also from the Regional Water Quality Control Board. And then in terms of the tree removal, that was an issue of concern when we went out to the local groups as well. As I mentioned at the beginning, that site was completely overgrown with trees. The arborists did go out there and make a formal assessment that 32 of those were category trees, either native or landmark. And because you are creating 20 new lots as the proposal with footprints and streets, some of those would have to go as part of this proposal. And as a result, that mitigation would be 10 protected oak trees would be proposed for removal with 107 inches of mitigation, and that's an in lieu fee that goes to the Sacramento Tree Foundation, and then they use those monies to either acquire land or make additional plantings. And so, with those mitigation features, the project would be less than significant impacts. Here we have the side-by-side to make it a little easier to sort of see the relationship. You can see that that one lot, just with one home, 4.4, would have been interesting to live there for all that time and see all that development come around. But this most recent aerial, you can see the extent of a lot of that tree removal. A few of those that were left were either identified as front yard trees or else could remain in place. Our county code does require one tree for interior lots and two on corner lots, so there would be new tree plantings, and then the folks could obviously do whatever they want with their backyards. The Carmichael Plan does have policies that do try to retain many trees as possible. All of these were considered within the normal course of development, again, for home footprints and street layouts. The overall connection that you can see to Liggett and Orville would be maintained, promoting our policies of grid connectivity, multimodal transit, making it a little easier for folks to get around. Importantly also, currently, on the left side there, where you see the Gibbons Drive on the image, there is no sidewalk, so there is a missing segment there. This development would include that four-foot attached sidewalk to create that connectivity there, so people wouldn't be forced to get into the street as they go past this property. And then lastly, it does have that little curve and a jog. You'll notice that it's not straight and linear, and that is a result of organizing it, the layout to accommodate additional residential lots. If they had developed it according to the lotting size and layout that you see to the left or right, they'd probably have 14 or 15 lots. Instead, by doing the creative curve, be able to maximize that to 20 lots, all compliant with current county development standards for lot size. And the small wrinkle to that is that the sewer easement and the work easement, that yellow-toned line on the right side, would end up in the front yard of some of the lots on the eastern side, as discussed in the staff report. That has been vetted and approved by the sewer district and the other folks in charge of the streets, indicating that as long as you don't build over it a structure, it's okay. In 2022, we did go to the Design Review Advisory Committee. They discussed at length that little curve in the street and thought it actually might be kind of interesting, and it would actually maybe cut down on quick pass-through traffic because it does have a nonlinear path. They did recommend it for, say, excuse me, they did recommend it, project was in substantial compliance with the design guidelines are determined. And then we did go also to the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Council. There was a fair amount of public turnout, almost all related to traffic. There's another street down the way that people use as a pass-through to get to Fair Oaks, because that's the only place that signaledized where you can make a left. And so, the idea was that any additional residential development in the area would increase additional pass-through traffic on sudden place getting over to Fair Oaks. However, that's an off-site mitigation and has nothing to do with the merits of this project in particular. There was also concern in the public letters. We did receive eight public comments during the course of the project review. We put up two signs, one at the base of Gibbons, the other at the top at Orville, to make sure people knew that these stub streets were going to be going through as part of this proposal. And many of them did talk about, can we keep the stub street? I'm a little disappointed that this is going away. Those were their comments. However, as indicated, these stub streets are always considered to be a punch-through. That's why they're not terminating in a cul-de-sac, is that they're just that abrupt termination. 68 years later is a long time, but these paper subdivisions often wait that long. And then at the community council, they did recommend approval to this body of the planning commission. Overall, we've touched on many of these aspects already. The Orville Way, slightly irregular, but so is a couple of the other streets in the neighborhood, not too different if you look at a broader picture. The sewer easements in the front yard, again, unusual, but that's an allowable practice. And then all of the lots meet the lot size minimums, 5200 interior, 6200 as usual. They are a bit smaller, and some keen-eyed observers did point that out. They said, hey, these look a little skinnier in front. And again, that's because back in the day, everything was pretty much a quarter acre, and our standards now allow for smaller lot sizes at the RD5 level. And the special development permit, again, just applies to that front yard for proposed Lot 5. So, staff, is recommending approval of this project that the planning commission determined that the SEQU document, the mitigated negative declaration, is adequate and complete, approve the tentative subdivision map pursuant to the findings and conditions, and the special development permit, again, just to propose Lot 5, it's a front yard setback, that the project is in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines, and then adopt the mitigation measures, mitigation monitoring and reporting program. That does conclude staff's presentation. Again, we have what the agent and the property owner here available, and if there's any members of the public, they're invited as well to speak. And I'm available for questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dobernek. Questions this evening, Commissioners? All right. I got a few. I'll hop in. So, we have 32 trees protected. I was just trying to work through all the different reports here and make sure my numbers added up. From what I see in the mitigation monitoring, 10 of those are slated for removal, and two of those are slated for protection. The other 20, there's no mention of them in the conditions of approval, but in the environmental report, they're slated, from what I could tell, as remain. So, those trees are all going to remain, but they don't require any protection from construction activities? Is that, am I reading it correctly?
I believe you are. We have Julie Newton. Certain trees get protection, some don't, but I'll let Julie take over here. She's nodding her head. You have the oak trees and other landmark trees get special status and protection, and then other trees are just there. They're just trees.
That's correct. So, Julie Newton, environmental coordinator with planning. So, when we review the proposed development at this point, the trees that are slated for removal are those that we know would need to be removed or potentially removed to make the lots buildable. So, those are accounted for in the mitigation. For those that are not specifically called out for potential removal, then protective measures would apply.
So, why doesn't that add up to 32, then?
I'll have to look into the document real quick.
Okay. Yeah, I see 32 landmark or protected trees, and that was what your presentation showed. So, I just, I wonder if we need to include those other 20 in the construction measure mitigation?
As I understand it, those are non-protected trees. Those would be the oaks or other species, is my understanding. But I'm going to let Julie look into that.
Okay. Let's look into that, and I got a few others. The, if we could go back to the satellite image there, I'm just curious, that 5625 lot that is shown to the east, is that a house?
Yeah. That little bowling alley?
Yeah.
That's a strange one, isn't it? Yes.
That's a house behind there. Okay. And I'm assuming fires reviewed this, were comfortable putting a neighborhood and leaving that house on that little, because I'm sure that parcel doesn't match any of our codes.
No. There's always a few outliers. These are legacy properties right here. How and why that one got into it, I don't know. That one's also, if you were to see that, it doesn't really have a sidewalk. It just has a driveway because it's that narrow. That's it at the base. Yeah. It's an unusual one. But we did not use that as a template for what to do, but it is represent a outlier or a legacy of a legal non-conforming lot.
Okay. And then, you know, my last one's really with the kind of history. You guys call out a couple of, basically, the tree removal prior to development would make this inconsistent with the community plan, or at least a couple of the sections of the community plan. So, can you go through kind of the history of why those trees were removed with a tree permit instead of as part of the development, and then whether mitigation was paid for those six trees previously, or whether they were removed without mitigation?
That is a great question. The property owners, regardless if they have a development proposal or not, are free to engage in tree removals, and those were vetted by our tree coordinator. In terms of the mitigation, I don't have the answer to that, unfortunately. That is something, though, that even if they did qualify for mitigation, then it would apply during the tree removal process, but they can be done independent of the proposal. But I get your point. Why wasn't it sort of deferred until it's part of this application because they are separate actions?
Yeah, I'm okay with it being separate actions, but I just wanted to clarify our policy in that mitigation would still be required for individual tree permit removal.
So, for individual tree permit removal, our tree permit process is a little bit different than how we analyze tree impacts through a SEQU document. So, applicants do need to file for a permit and pay a permit fee. At that point, depending on the tree, it's analyzed for potential health and safety impacts. When there is a demonstrated potential health and safety impact, then no mitigation is required. I can't say for certain, I don't have the information in front of me, the nature of these particular trees, but if the trees were encroaching onto the house or posed some other impact, mitigation may not have been required.
Can we pull that data while we carry on for those tree permits so I can understand? If we're calling it out as inconsistent with the community plan, I think it's important to understand whether those, I have no issue removing those trees for health or safety, but...
Can I just get a point of clarification? Are we talking about trees that were removed before an application was submitted?
Correct. That is correct.
Yeah, those would be handled separately through just county code enforcement, however we enforce illegal tree removal, but it doesn't need to be part of the SEQU document or the environmental analysis for this map?
Unless we're calling out that this project is now inconsistent with the community plan and the staff report.
And, yeah, I would add that there are additional trees beyond the ones that they pulled the six permits for, for tree removal, that are part of this. Unfortunately, I took the latest photo, which I could, but if we were to go back a few years, you wouldn't be able to see the house, sort of as I alluded to. It was completely full of trees. It was left to go back to its native state, so there are additional trees that would be removed as part of this proposal, and that is, in general, inconsistent with the community plan, which asks that you retain trees, but you can't really build a new subdivision without removing some of the trees for streets, footprints of building pads and sidewalks. So, certain trees, the ones identified here, have been identified to remain. But I get your point on that one.
Yeah, I'm being asked to make a finding that this project's being consistent with the community plan, right?
Yeah.
And just to, this is Jessica Brandt, just to add on to that, I think, one, you're certainly welcome to ask the applicant and his representative the history behind removing the trees prior to bringing in an entitlement application. And then, two, we, with the community plan and the findings of consistency, there are a number of other community plan policies that we did feel that this was consistent with. And so, on balance, we do have a recommendation that you find it consistent overall with the community plan. But, yeah, we did want to call those out specifically as, you know, because there was tree removal, and then the application came in. I think it would have been disingenuous not to mention that. Yeah.
Understood. Thank you. Any other questions for staff this evening? Commissioner Borja?
Hi. Thank you for the presentation. Does the subdivision map include complete streets or at least sidewalk improvements for that section of Gibbons Drive?
Absolutely. Yes, all the new streets along, it's going to be the new Orville Way and that little connection of Liggett, and along the front edge of Gibbons would all have a four-foot attached sidewalk.
Understood. It'll just kind of end on the 3900. I drove down Gibbons earlier today, but the sidewalks kind of end in...
You sure would. That is a good point, right there, yeah. It would just be at the property frontage itself. There is no requirement to go off-site, like they wouldn't redo that entire block from Horton to Henderson. It would just be that frontage that you see at the bottom there in yellow.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff this evening? All right. Thank you, Mr. Dobrnek. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant up. And we'll have everybody that may answer questions, if your whole team wants to get sworn in at once, you can.
I'm John Marshaw. I'm JM Engineering, and I have been sworn.
Ravi Aluru. I'm the applicant, and I've been sworn.
Thank you. You guys have comments for our presentation this evening, or just want to answer some questions?
I'm available for any questions. I don't have any other comments.
I would like to address the question of your...
Come on over here.
The question regarding tree removal, prior to applying for the permit to do the subdivision, was really our intent was to occupy the house, and a lot of the trees were impacting the house, and most of them were removed right around the house. And as you can see, the roof is brand-new, and it's got a lot of fresh paint and stuff. So we wanted to occupy it, then the idea came, let's develop it, basically. That's why the trees were removed prior to our application. We didn't have the intent to apply for several years on that.
As I observed, when I just first got into this project, there's some dead trees and some branches were falling off, and as I understand it, they removed those.
So can you guys address the trees that are in the environmental document? Are all those trees that say "remain" in the environmental document, are those all still standing, and are they going to remain?
We will try to preserve all the heritage oaks, except maybe the ones along the sewer line. There's an existing six-inch VCP line right in the middle of the property, as it's marked on the TSM. There may be three or four trees that we have to remove, otherwise we try to protect all of the remaining trees.
And the trees that were removed with tree permits, they were removed for, I'm just trying to understand what they were removed for. And you said they were right around the house?
Yeah, most of them were around the house, leaning over the house, or the potential tipping over, because they were almost falling branches on the roof.
And the conditions of approval, are you guys in agreement with all of the conditions of approval and mitigation that are outlined?
Yes, we do.
Other questions for the applicant this evening? All right, thank you both for being here. And with that, we'll move to public comment?
And there are no public comments for this item.
Okay. And none online, neither?
Nothing online.
Okay. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Go back over to our environmental coordinator here.
Sure. So it appears in the analysis here, so there are a number of trees that were not specifically called out for protective measures. The analysis was based on the buildable footprint that is seen on the tentative map. So there are a number of trees that are along the edge of the property, which would theoretically be outside of that buildable area. Therefore, it wasn't anticipated that they would be directly impacted. So the applicant said, it does look like there's a number that could be preserved. Additionally, there are a handful of trees that don't meet the county's threshold of six inches that would technically be protected under general plan policy. So those may not have been accounted for in that number count as well.
So the conclusion is, is that those trees, those are the other 20 trees, maybe Mr. Dobrnek's presentation, there's not 32 landmark or historical, or landmark or oak trees that are included there, or there are 32 trees?
There are 32 native trees on site. Not all of them are landmark or historic in nature, meaning reaching that threshold of 18 inches or more. There are a number that are much smaller, and some that technically, they're accounted for because they're native trees in our document, but they don't necessarily reach the size limit that would warrant additional protective measures.
So I hate to go tree by tree here, but I'm going to get a little detailed, because I don't know, you know, I guess I'm just really trying to understand this. So let's talk about tree 254. So you said it's six inches, so that one is four and a half inches, so that even though it says retain in the environmental report, this isn't included in the mitigation program to retain, so there's no requirement from the county to mitigate for that.
That is correct.
Okay. So we go to the next one, 255, it's a 10-inch live oak, says retain. It doesn't have a mitigation calculation in it, so I'm assuming that keeps, so 255. And then we go to our mitigation. Sorry, I got to hop all the way back here to the mitigation that's here.
So tree 255 happens to be along the very perimeter of the parcel?
Yes.
Which is one of those, it's outside. If you look at the subdivision map, there is an anticipated buildable area. Because that tree is outside of the buildable area, it's anticipated that it would not be removed.
Got it. So we're not calling out that it needs to be protected, but it will be retained as part of the project?
That's correct.
Okay, as long as we're comfortable that those trees are still there and they will be maintained, just without a mitigation measure, I'm a little uncomfortable that we're going to have grading on site and they're not called out in any mitigation measure.
Right, and perhaps to add a little bit more context of how this mitigation measure gets implemented, is our mitigation measure calls out the trees that they're allowed to remove. When they submit for their grading plans and improvement plans, our MMRP staff review those plans, and if there are trees that are, essentially, it has to be in line with their mitigation measure. They're not allowed to remove trees beyond what is stated here. So those do get reviewed again with their grading plans and building permits.
Okay, and those trees, if the grading plans were to change, and we're now within the drip line of these, some of these that are on the perimeter, then they would be included?
That is correct.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that. And as far as the trees that got removed prior to this, I'm looking at the satellite imagery now versus the environmental report, and it looks like most of them were not, most of them were canopy, but they're not protected trees. Is that fair?
Yes, that is correct. That's been my interpretation as well. As you see, the applicant did, you know, prior to submitting for this application, so which would be out of our purview for review here, but they did go through the appropriate channels for tree permits for native trees protected by ordinance. Outside of an application that we'd be reviewing for entitlements, we don't have specific protective measures for non-native trees. There wouldn't be anything to prohibit them from removing those.
Okay. Sorry to drag this one down to the tree level. I just, I saw a lot of reports, and I was trying to put it all together in my own head to make sure we're going to end up preserving as many of the trees as we can. So thank you for answering the questions tonight, and I'm comfortable. Any other questions for staff this evening, or the applicant? I'm ready to entertain a motion.
I'll boost staff report, and thank you, Chair, for all those questions. They were helpful to understand.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further deliberation? All right, please call the roll.
Members Borja?
Yes.
Raythal?
Yes.
Corona Sabaniano?
Yes.
And Devlin?
Yes.
And the motion carries with those members present.
All right, that concludes our contested portion. We now move on to the miscellaneous portion of the agenda. Item number four is our planning director's report.
Jessica Brandt, again. I don't have a planning director report, but as always, I would love to talk scheduling. So...
Sounds good. We can hop on to item number five. Are we talking January 8th?
Yes, so let me get up to that. Too far. Okay, so January 8th, we do have, one, two, three, four items on the advanced agenda. Three are planning commission, and one is a border zoning appeals item. I'm hoping to get a sense of whether we have a quorum anticipated for that night. Does anyone know if they will be unable to make the January 8th meeting?
I'll be here.
All right. Great. And then just a heads up for January 22nd. This one also looks like a heavy agenda. Two, three, four, five, six, seven items on the advanced agenda. So hopefully, that is also a date that works for everyone. I know that's right after the holiday, so anyone planning to be out on the 22nd? No? Okay. I think that's as far as I want to go. Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll move on to public comments.
And there are no public comments.
All right. Thank you all for your time this evening. We're going to go ahead and adjourn at 6:20 PM. Have a great evening and a happy holiday.
Happy holidays.